Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Elsworth City Council, Monday, July 18, 2016, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present. In the count of four, item two, we invite you to stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item three, rules of order. Council meetings are conducted under the Roberts Rules of Order and other such rules as were decided on at the organizational meeting of council in November 2015. I would also ask that you please turn off or silence your cell phones and mobile devices. Thank you, councillor. And I will defer to councillor Ford here.
Mr. Chairman, this time I'd ask unanimous consent from the council to add two items this evening. One would be the request of the city manager to accept a bid for the Davis Brook Shore Road culvert reconstruction project. And the other one would be approve an agreement between the city of Elsworth and the Hancock County Commissioners for the regional communications center third shift dispatching service. I would ask that to keep numbers straight for the clerk, that if those could go as 19B, the construction of Davis Brook, and 19C for the communications shifting. Also included in that motion would be, at that time, to suspend the rules and take 19B and 19C out of order so that we can do them after number 15, which is right before we're going to do executive session. We can get them done and get the people out of here. So I'd make that as a motion.
Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll add those as 19B and 19C. Item number four, adoption of minutes from the meeting of Elsworth City Council, June 20, 2016. That's the regular monthly meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Cole.
Yes, councillor, probably be quicker to say what isn't going on in the city right now because, as we all know, there's a lot of activity. This being July and with the construction underway, not on 1A. We are meeting weekly with Maine DOT and R.F. Jordan to coordinate. So far, so good. We appreciate the traveling public's patience because there are times, I came in this morning and probably a 10-minute delay. And we will keep the public informed as things go along. Again, for those of you who want to have email alerts, go on the Maine DOT website and sign up or go through the city's website. There's a link there as well. I would point out that on August 2, it's going to be a great day for the city of Elsworth as Jackson Laboratory will be breaking ground on its new mouse production. There's a scientific word for this, I know, but-
Vivarium.
Vivarium in Elsworth at the Lowe's, former Lowe's site, that day, I believe, at 12:30. And earlier in the day, we'll also be doing a ribbon cutting on the city's 5,000-square-feet incubator facility down on Water Street. So both real milestones for the city. Otherwise, things are going well this summer and a lot of activity and staff getting some well-deserved vacation time in.
Thank you, Manager Cole. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll move to item number six, committee reports. Anyone that's attended a committee meetings in the past month since the last time we met and care to report?
Not during summer.
Go ahead, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore and I had attended the harbor commission meeting and things are going well and I think there was any other remarkable discussion about anything every day.
They were enthusiastic.
The slips are rented. Everything is rented. Maybe the boat's not in, but they're all paid for.
The park looks good, too, might add.
If I could add to that report, I was down to the harbor today and we've got, remember the coastal cruises that came up a couple of years ago last year?
Yeah, two or three of them.
We got five on the docks for the next two nights. They love Elsworth. They're going to try to go up the river to that lobster pot restaurant that Senator Langley owns. He's got a float out there and they're going to try to do that this evening.
Need to.
So it is. It's a bustling time down there. Adam's done a great job.
Are those lobster-type boats?
No.
No, they weren't.
Big fly bridges on a couple of them.
Because I've gone up the Suri side of the bay, I saw three or four boats going up under power.
Any other committee reports? All right. Item number seven is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any issue that might be of interest to them or ask questions or make a comment. We ask that you keep your comments short and don't anticipate an answer immediately. You may get a quick answer, you may get no answer, but just an opportunity for the council to hear out anything that may be of concern to you as a citizen. We would ask that if you come that you come to the podium, state your name for the record, and we'll be glad to hear your presentation, anyone at all. Citizen comments. Seeing none, I'll say that citizen comments is over and if you think of something afterwards, our next meeting will be in August. Item number eight, if we're done tonight, presentation of awards. This is going to be a really great night for presentations and it's a proud night for the city of Elsworth and we want to take a little bit of time to do this right. I'm going to ask Chief Tupper to come up and assist here with me. And I'm going to ask Mike Hangy, Ken Warden, Gary Saunders, and Clyde Cushing to all come forward. And I'm going to ask councillor Ford here if he'd join me down here, too, having that long history with firefighting and I know this is something that's dear to your heart as well. If I may incorporate my head as well.
Richard, if you're going to be speaking, turn the microphone around so it's a puppet.
All right. I'm going to start with Mr. Hangy. In recognition of your 30 years of full-time service to the Elsworth Fire Department and your various capacities, from firefighter to captain to fire inspector, and recognizing your additional six years of service as paid-on-call firefighter, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community has contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Presented this 18th day of July, 2016, David Cole, city manager, and Heidi Grindel, city clerk. Mike, can I say 30 years? I'm supposed to say, hold your applause till we're done, but don't hold your applause. Ken Warden, Ken, in recognition of your 30 years of overall service to the Elsworth Fire Department and your various capacities from paid-on-call firefighter to career firefighter to your current position as training coordinator, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Presented this 18th day of July, 2016, signed David Cole, city manager, and Heidi Grindel, city clerk. 30 more years. You counting up the years?
Yes.
Next is Gary Saunders. In recognition of your 20 years full-time service to the Elsworth Fire Department and your various capacities, from lieutenant to deputy fire chief, recognize your additional two years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Again, presented this 18th day of July, 2016, David Cole, city manager, and Heidi Grindel, Next is Clyde Cushing. In recognition of your 20 years overall service to the Elsworth Fire Department and your various capacities, from paid-on-call firefighter to your current position as safety officer, your devotion to duty, loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Presented this 18th day of July, 2016, signed David Cole, city manager, and Heidi Grindel, city clerk.
What's Bobby up here for?
Everybody wondered why Bobby was up here, too, wasn't it?
He's the bodyguard, he told me.
Exactly.
So we wanted to give Lieutenant Dorfman recognition as well, since he has gone out on his own to achieve a fire science degree from Columbia Southern University. Lieutenant Dorfman, myself standing up here, that made 145 years of service.
We're not done.
Think of that.
We're not done yet.
Time flies when you're having a good time.
Kevin. This certificate of appreciation tonight is presented to Kevin Bland in honor of your retirement from the city of Elsworth Fire Department after 39 years of service as a paid-on-call firefighter. The city recognizes your accomplishments from volunteer to paid-on-call firefighter to your current position as paid-on-call lieutenant. During your time with the Elsworth Fire Department, you also served as lead instructor for the Hancock County Firefighter Academy from 2004 to 2014 and received the Elsworth Fire Department 2005 Firefighter of the Year Award. It's particularly commendable that while serving on the Elsworth Fire Department, you were also a career firefighter for Bar Harbor and retired from the Bangor Fire Department as a lieutenant. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to this community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. On behalf of a grateful community, we thank you for your dedicated commitment and service to our city. I'm Dennis Ford. That's 184 years of service. It's I'm counting it. Councilor Ford here, and we have some other firefighters in the audience. So Elsworth has an awful lot to be proud of and this is one thing that is a highlight for me and I think for the whole council. I think I speak for everybody, when we can recognize employees who have done the job, stayed with the stuff, and shown their best side. And it takes a lot of character and a lot of courage to do what you do. And from all of us, to all of you that serve in these capacities, again, we say thank you. I have one more presentation to make and I'm going to have councillor Perkins come down here and join me. And as soon as she comes down here, I'm going to have councillor Phillips join me as well.
With this ring IV wed.
I was trying to hear out today what chairman did she work with over her years and I came up with Ford here and Phillips.
Oh, you want me down there, too?
They should be down there. Yeah. So without even consulting with me, Pam, you just announced your leaving. And I just want to say publicly, I don't appreciate that at all. But we do appreciate the nine years of service that you've put in. I said the other day, well, we're going to recognize Pam at council meeting. They said, oh, we're going to recognize her. I said, well, nine years is quite a bit, especially when you're only, you know, that old. And nine years doing this is like 29 years doing something else.
Anything else.
Anything else. But Pam has really, really come on as a councillor. Someone said the other day, she's really got her voice. She has some great, she just sits back and listens and takes it all in and then she starts asking the questions and you sit up because it's going to be a smart, well-thought-out question and a lot of details and stuff that the rest of us hadn't thought of. So Pam, we recognize that you have some great talent and we're just sorry to lose it. But we're happy for you and James and your family and as you go down to the cool part of the country, it's going to be wonderful. Who wouldn't want to be in Atlanta, Georgia right now? But we're glad that we've had the chance to work with you. I was thinking of all the different committees you've served on in those nine years. And I was just thinking the last, say, two and a half to three years, especially the Human Resources Committee, you did a great job helping us with our assignments there and Recreation and the Knowlton Park Committee and all of those great things that you've been involved with. The goal-setting, the housing study, all those that you really gave us a lot of good input. We appreciate it. We really, really do. We're going to miss you. But we thank you for your nine years of service to the city of Elsworth. And so we're going to present to you tonight this plaque in appreciation of your nine years of service as a city councillor for the city of Elsworth, Maine, Pamela M. Perkins, from 2007 to 2016. And we wrote some little love notes under that.
It's been a huge, huge honor to be doing this the last time here. And you all have been very gracious with me. I remember your Adam's work.
Yeah.
But yeah, this will be home always and I'm excited to see people do all the work on. And when I come back, we'll be better than ever, I'm sure.
There you go. There you go. Thanks again. And as soon as we adjourn, we're going to have a little just get-together, light refreshments and some fun drinks. And you're invited to stay and have a chance to bid Pam so long and good luck and see you later and all that to that.
Pam, it's not a sale.
Feel free if you can and you have to leave, we understand. And we look forward to that. This is great. Thank you. No items of unfinished business, no items on the consent agenda tonight. And we move down to new business item number nine, public hearing in action on the following business applications. First is Elsworth Alx Lodge, number 2743, at 317 High Street for renewal of a city Class B license, Victor Lure alcohol and special amusement, and renewal of a state club on-premise catering liquor license, malt, spirituous, and vinous. Staff, any issues or any problems? All right. Public hearing is open. Anyone care to address this or speak for or against this application? Hearing none. Close of public hearing. Council action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of the Elsworth Alx Lodge for renewal of their licenses.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next is Capital Pizza Huts, Inc., doing business as Pizza Hut 211 High Street for renewal of a city Class C license, Victor Lure and alcohol. City staff, any issues?
No.
Open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this application? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Capital Pizza Hut's renewal of the city license.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 10, councillor number 071600, request of the city manager to issue a request for proposals for development of market-rate housing on city-owned property located at Shore Road, land-only, along Leonard Lake on map 034 lot 001, and at Sterling Street, land-only, on map 36 lot 077. What do you do? Oh, your manager, Cole.
After the recent sale of the city-owned Graham Lake, I asked staff to provide a list of city-owned properties where perhaps there was land available to help promote housing development in the city. And as the council knows all too well, Elsworth has housing needs right across the board, from affordable housing to market situations. In fact, the recent market, housing market study that looked at 55 years and older clearly demonstrated that need. And particularly on the 55 and older, not only was there a need for affordable housing for seniors, but we heard from people in the public who were giving up their homes, perhaps too big for them now, that they'd like other situations, perhaps a condo or a townhouse or some other type of a unit where not as much yard work and such. Part of the properties that were owned by the city and not dedicated for any particular use are along, on Leonard Lake. One is a 5.5-acre parcel offshore road down below Leonard Lake housing nestled along the shore. The other is a approximately one-acre lot more over towards Sterling Road, near the boom line by the dam on Leonard Lake. I'm seeking authorization for the council to develop and issue a request for proposals related to those properties that would go out to qualified housing developers and let the market come back to us as to what the potential for those properties is. Terms of the RFP, we didn't want to get too far down the road without consulting and having your blessing to flesh this out, but at least the initial thought is that we would be looking for development that takes advantage of these infill opportunities, you know, within the urban core where we can work off from city services such as water and sewer in the form of multi-unit townhouses, condos, cottages, again, what the market needs and what the markets will bear. Also with the objective of putting these properties improved, as improved, on the tax rolls and also through a design that enhances the area and the lake and other housing development in those particular areas. What I would suggest is a process where we go through an RFP. The council, through the chair, appoint an advisory committee to work with staff, help guide the selection of a developer or developers on these sites. And of course, it would come back to the council for your final blessing. I would suggest that perhaps on such an advisory group, we work with the Elsworth Business Development Corporation, perhaps some of the folks who are involved in our housing study in that committee, as well as councilors on this group, and see what is out there in the marketplace that can be done. Looking, talking with staff, the city planner, code enforcement officer, and others, particularly the Shore Road site, which is five and a half acres, could potentially cite perhaps even up to 15 to 20 units, depending on how large they are and how you configure them. It's important to note that there's a 100-foot setback from the lake and I would strongly suggest that the city retain rights along that shore for public access, for a walking trail, for example. And that could be incorporated into any partnership that we strike with a private party to mutual The initial thought is to do this as one RFP, but developers could respond to either property or both properties. And I'd also suggest that we have a public meeting where we invite the neighbors and people, anyone who's interested in housing development in the city and get their input in the formation of this RFP. So we go in there with the best possible approach to this. So that is the request. And I'd entertain questions at this point if you have any. You have a map in front of you that shows first a site map. And Michelle, if you could put for the public, it's out there.
I'm sure it's going to.
And again, faced out towards the public so folks, or put it on the easel and just tilt it out there. But first on the site map, I think this property is very strategic. I think you all have it, councils have it in front of you. But if you look at, even though this site is nestled along the lake in a nice forested site, you go up above there and you have Knowlton Park, you have the YMCA, you have the schools, you have the Moore Center. It's a short walk from the downtown, the library, Main Street. So there's a wealth of assets surrounding this. So I think this should be a very attractive site to a developer. The other site is located, as I said, closer to the dam. It may not lend itself to the same type of development. Could be a duplex or a couple duplexes or a small apartment building. That is a one-acre site. As you can see on your attached maps, for the Shore Road site, five and a half acres, when you take out the 100-foot setback, it would be about 2.4 developable acres. But keep in mind, the density could be in that area and the setback provides the green area, you know, to support the areas. Shore Road, it's about 20,000 square feet of developable property. Again, the same idea that you can, you know, develop a concentrated development with common buffer areas and green space. So this is the beginning of a proposed process. I don't come to you tonight with a specific RFP. Again, we didn't want to invest a lot of time into it until we had your blessing. And I would like your support on this.
All right. Council, questions?
I have an issue. This is in the shoreline zone, limited residential, which requires 40,000 square feet per dwelling unit. That half acre on Sterling Street doesn't come close because you've got a half acre of usable outside the 100-foot setback.
The land that's beyond the 100-foot setback is 2.5 acres.
Right. And you have to have 40,000 for a dwelling unit. Does that mean outside of the shoreline zone or total?
We're not going to be doing anything within the 100-foot setback. We're going to be outside.
But does the 100-foot setback, is that used as credit against the 40,000 square feet per dwelling unit?
I'm not understanding. But you're concerned that there's not enough space to do the fire?
Our zoning ordinance requires in that limited residential, 40,000 square feet per dwelling unit. If that land is one acre, that's one unit, not, not a duplex. That's one dwelling unit according to our zoning ordinance.
All right, but. Got you.
So, and my question is, and does the land within the Shoreland 100-foot setback count when you're talking 40,000 square feet per dwelling unit?
So, yes, it does.
It does. Okay, so you can put a single unit on that piece of property?
That's all.
All right, and on the other one, you can put 5.6 approximately units.
Yeah, I wish Dwight was here. Dwight's really the Shoreland zoning expert. I don't.
Well, I sat here and studied chapter four, section 409.3 this afternoon, and it's quite clear that that one acre lot on Sterling Street is only capable of holding one dwelling unit by our ordinance.
So I, I'm going to say, I'm going to obtain the right to change my mind in the sense that we did have a conversation regarding the Marisone. I don't know if you remember this morning. We had that conversation. And if, yeah, I, I'm going to have to look into it. I don't want to say anything that's going to.
Listen, I didn't, and I don't want to fluff you on it either. But I, that's one of my concerns. And the other one is 5.66?
I'm surprised Dwight just didn't pick up on this because he's been, and I'm not saying that you're, you're wrong, but we did look at this quite a bit. So we have to look at it and see exactly how it works.
And my other concern, Ms. Chairman, then I'll sit back, is the Sterling Street unit. That's a residential, single-family neighborhood. Is we're going to have another Pacha Street. You know, moving in a multi-unit into a place that doesn't have it. I, for one, think that we should offer that for a single unit. I don't have a problem selling it, but I don't think we can sit here and think that we can have two duplexes on there. You'd have to have four acres of land.
Can I please say something to that matter? Manager Cole was, was very aware of this in the sense that, that that's why he had recommended, and I think he did mention it, to hold a neighborhood meeting, including anybody else that wants to come. But a neighborhood meeting with the people that live there to hear their comments and consent, so we do not go back to a situation where we have been, to my, to be respectful and mindful of the neighbors.
And on the.
That was discussed.
On the Leonard Lake site with a total acreage involved, you can get 6.2 units. So it's not as grandiose plan. Shore Road lot is 5.66 acres. Times 43,264 an acre, divided by 40,000 required, is 6.2 dwelling units on that, on that place. So this isn't grandiose as we'd like because of those restrictions in our Shoreland Limited Residential. So it's a good idea. I'd love to see you continue on researching it. I don't want to put an anchor on it tonight, but we've got some, some questions.
Yeah, I think that also that a single-family attached is the same thing. So I think you may be able to put a duplex on the Shore Road one.
On the Shore Road?
Yeah, Sterling Street.
It says 40,000 per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit? It doesn't say per.
Building, it says dwelling unit. And you also have to have 200 foot of shore per dwelling unit. So that limits you to two, but the square footage limits you to one. The best use of that property may be to offer it to sale to the butters or to the neighborhood that has the view of the lake. They play horseshoes there, they park trailers there, they, that may be the best overall use, I don't know. It's not for a multifamily, as far as I'm concerned. Don't want to put cold water on it, but.
Manager Cole?
Well, certainly, you know, the council wishes to treat these two properties differently. That makes sense. I, counselor, I'm only going by what the code enforcement officer advised me this morning, and perhaps he missed it, I'd want to go back and talk on it. But either way, I think it makes sense to put these properties back on the tax rolls. And if, if the current zoning doesn't accommodate larger number of units, then I think we should look at what it can accommodate.
I reference chapter four, table 409.3 and 0.2. Those are the Shoreland Zone Limited Residential, or it's non-titled areas except for DPs, SPs, and RPs, so that includes a limited residential.
Well, again, this would be the beginning of a process to look at, look at what could go on there. So, and again, I didn't ask the code enforcement officer to attend tonight, but I will be talking with him.
And that's why it's before us tonight, simply to get some input.
This is the beginning.
Decide how we want to proceed, putting together an RFP, and go from there. Anyone else want to weigh in at this point?
Counselor Bergens? The Shore Road section, you did pique my interest when you mentioned a, you know, private-public combination there and walking paths. I think that that particular area has a lot of potential in terms of public use that hasn't been realized. And that a, that kind of partners, private-public kind of partnership and co-mingling there would probably be the best, or could result in a really positive piece of property for the city and a good, a really good thing. So I would support it. I want that to kind of stay in the vision, I would hope. I think that's an important, a really important part of the puzzle of that, whatever it might say.
Good thoughts. Counselor Moore?
In that narrow bend that stretches in front of the school all the way over to Forest Avenue, probably most of you who have lived here for a while realize that that's a fairly steep incline down to the lake. So probably it would only be suitable for, well, for hiking trail, you want to, you want to be pretty agile.
Anyone else? You're not sitting back, counselor. You said you'd sit back.
No, no, but I just, Pam talking about the, the public path. I can see a carry-in launch for kayaks and canoes on Leonard's Lake as part of that project. You know, go down the path, carry in your kayak and go for a ride.
There's a lot of potential there. Is that satisfying for tonight?
Yep. Like I say, this is the beginning of a process.
Absolutely. Keep it alive.
And if I could mention, Counselor, too, I hadn't presumed that there'd need a zoning change or even if a zoning change were appropriate, but that's not off the table for the council to consider either.
I think once we get some input, we could, we could even workshop this.
Yeah.
And look at all the different things.
I mean, the, the density of development being envisioned here is not out of character with what's above at Leonard Lake Housing. So, again, I want to explore that, but that's, like I say, it's the beginning of a process.
Counselor Phillips?
I agree with your idea of taking it off of, out of the dormant state, putting it back on the face of the earth of some values of somebody, but as you're discussing here, what use it becomes is another thing. But it's good that you've done this, and I think you headed in the correct direction to get there.
That's wonderful, thank you. We'll move on to item 11. We have Kevin Bunker from Developers Collaborative here tonight, and we've invited him to come and speak on a proposed workforce housing development, which would be located between Washington and Foster Streets. We're not here to take action tonight, we just want to listen to some of the plan and so, welcome, welcome back, Kevin. Glad to have you here.
Have you guys seen this before? Do you for a few minutes and then spin it so they can see it partway through?
That'd be fun.
Didn't bring two?
Did not bring two.
Budget cuts.
Everybody see that? I'm going to talk blind, but I know it fairly well, so it should be okay. So, good evening, thank you for having me here today. My name is Kevin Bunker. My company's called Developers Collaborative. I'm here to talk to you today about a workforce housing project that we have just this week applied for planning board approval, planning board and subdivision approval, four from the city. It's been a lot of work in a very short amount of time. This project came together very quickly, and due to the financing deadlines it's under, it's, it's basically before you now. So I'm here to explain a little bit about it. I've also had some preliminary discussions with the city manager about a tax increment financing district for the project, and I could talk in whatever length and depth about that you want to tonight. But generally speaking, I think I'll just take a couple minutes to introduce the project as a whole. This project came about due to a relationship that my company has with one of the co-owners of the shopping center immediately to the, to the east of it. That's the Rennies and Shaw's Shopping Center, which you'll see on the right-hand side of the drawing there. You'll see Washington Street across the top, Foster Street across the bottom. And this project is basically placed sort of behind the Rennies. There's a bunch of land in, in behind the shopping center, but before you go down the ravines and come out at Union River, Union River Estates on the south and Straw Way Family Housing on the north, there's a lot of vacant land in between. And this is proposed to use some of that vacant land where there's, there's an old cordage operation that used to be there, and there's some piles of what looks like sand and salt. It's generally just kind of a, a little bit of a wasteland area, and what we want to do is totally revitalize that area. We'd like to do two phases. This is phase one. This is 50 units of workforce housing. Phase two, we're hoping to do a similar-sized project with market rate housing. And it came about because of, like I said, the relationship with the owners of the shopping center. One of the trends that we're seeing nationally is shopping centers are more and more planning residential uses around them. For many years, the conventional wisdom was that you don't put residential near retail because it wants to be separate. Well, if you look at some of the very successful lifestyle centers elsewhere in the country, they are actually turning that idea on its head and putting not only just apartments near shopping centers, but hotels and other uses as well. So we're drafting on that trend a little bit. The other, the other trend we're obviously drafting on is that you guys are seeing a lot of growth. There's a lot happening in Ellsworth, and we initially got this brought to our attention by Senator King's office. One of the people in Senator King's office, Chris Rector, is familiar with a lot of the work that we do across the state, and asked us to look at the housings, the senior housing study you had, had a conversation with Vicky Sumter some months ago, began to sort of think about ideas, and then this, this popped up and it was, and A meets B, this is the idea. So it all kind of came together that the idea that the Jackson Labs coming, that you're going to have a lot of need for housing even more than the need you have now, and this is a project that can begin to fill one of those needs. So this is a 50-unit project, it's multiple buildings, I think it might be 11 separate buildings. There's typically about four, three, four, five units in a building. I could talk about the, the rent structure, all you want. You could talk about the, the way we get our financing, which is tax credits, they're awarded through the main state housing authority. Happy to talk about all that, talk about where the rents are, the rents are fixed to be affordable to people making between 20 and about $38,000 a year. So it's right in line with that announcement, Jackson Labs just made about the $15 an hour. So it's, that's the kind of people that, income band that we're able to serve with this program. There are all sorts of regulatory reasons why we, that's the, the people that we can, we can serve. We can't serve people making what the area median is, but we can't, also can't serve people who are making far, far less because the rent still has to get paid. So I can get into all that, answer any questions, also talk to the, the city manager about a tax increment financing district. That's, these tax credits are competitively awarded through the state. They're very hard to come by, they're typically about three times oversubscribed. The Straw Way just behind us was a successful project several years ago. My company's been fortunate enough to be successful every year now for the last eight years. So we're pretty good at finding out which projects can get funded and can get built and can be successful, and this is, this is a prime one that can do so. We're very excited about it. But the, the reason for the TIF is that the, the scoring, the scoring for the projects is based on a lot of different things. It's based on the community that you're in, the relative need that the housing authority has ranked it on, various elements of smart growth, how close to downtown you are, how ready you are to proceed, i.e. do you have all your municipal approvals, the quality and experience of the developer, the quality and experience of the management company. One of the biggest categories is the total development cost of the project. So the more efficient you are with costs, the better off you are. And one of the things you're scored on is whether or not the municipality is participating alongside you with a tax increment financing district. So there's all sorts of different ways to do a TIF for commercial properties. Those are probably the ones that you're more familiar with in town. Housing TIFs, though, are very similar, but a little bit of a different animal. They have some small changes, but in this case, very important changes that actually allow a TIF to get structured that essentially isn't costing you anything. I can explain why that is, but generally speaking, when you, when you add new valuation to your city and valuation goes up, like you were talking about in the previous proposal, your county taxes rise with it and your state aid to education drops and your municipal revenue sharing drops. And in Ellsworth, for every new dollar of tax valuation you add, you lose about 52 cents of that to those impacts. So you're netting about 48 cents on every dollar you add, which is maybe an argument for more density on Leonard Lake, but it's a hard, it's hard to get ahead, even when you're building and adding valuation. But what the TIF can do is shelter all that valuation so that that money that would have been lost anyway, most of it is put back to the project, allows the project to score the points it needs, allows it to succeed. You still come out slightly ahead of where you were if the project had had no TIF at all. And frankly, it's not going to be successful without one, it's not going to score high enough, so it's pretty important. All the, pretty much all the winners that you see have these TIFs in some form or fashion. So it's a lot easier to make the numbers work for a workforce TIF than it is a senior housing TIF, because you could put the, put the money in your education fund, which is very helpful, we talked about that as well. But I think the best thing to do probably is to just stop now and ask questions. I covered a lot of material in a short amount of time, and I don't want to presume which things are important to you tonight to ask questions about. So I think I'll stop there and take questions.
Questions?
I think it's a great project. I think it's the start of, of a very successful residential community, and thank you for coming to Ellsworth.
I was just having lunch with my, with my aunt, she's, she's watching me on TV tonight, so.
Ellsworth resident.
Where's the camera?
Right beside you.
I bet. And my, my dad's from Sorrento, so I grew up coming around here. I haven't got a chance to do anything here, but it's kind of nice to come back and, you know, put something forward at least and see, see what happens, so.
This is exactly the kind of thing that we've been looking for, taking land that's otherwise trash land, hasn't been used for anything. And you used the word revitalization, and that's an excellent term for it. I'm very excited about it.
It's easy to drive by and just think that's part of the Shaw's and the Rennies, and that's the way it always has to be, but as the city grows, you know, that land that's well-located and walkable and close to things becomes, all of a sudden, it becomes much more valuable for, for residential. And I just drive, drive by it and saw it and thought, oh my God, this is, this is a gem. This is, this has got a lot of potential. I looked all around Ellsworth for land that was big enough and couldn't really find much of anything that was close enough to where I wanted to be, and then I was talking to these guys, and there it was. So it's got a lot of traction really quickly because it's, it feels right, you know, it feels like the right thing, so.
So, I like the proposal. It's very interesting. Things went well. When would construction actually start? And I'm not asking for definite a time. Are we talking six months, a year, 18 months? And I'm not asking for definite a time, are we talking six months, a year, 18 months?
Nope, I would, uh, I'm applying for financing on October 28th of this year.
Okay.
So, that's when that goes in, I'll probably find out if I was successful by around the end of the year.
Okay.
If I'm successful, I hope to be, I don't wanna jinx it more than that, but assuming I am successful, I would look to break ground about May.
All right. So, within a year, it's not something that's long. That's what I was coming for, some kind of an idea. I know there's a ton of things for you to do and need, uh, requirements to fill before you're there, but I was just curious, what's your timeline?
We've come a long way in a short amount of time, I think the planner may be able to attest to the amount of work we've put in, and, you know, we came in town and said we were serious, I think we've, we've shown that. I'm gonna turn this around now, if you guys have gotten a good look at it.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Go ahead and turn it around. Um, earlier when you started your talk, you mentioned phase one.
Yep.
Are we looking at phase one, or is that?
It's phase one.
Yeah, you're looking at just phase one. You see there's a little inset over on the left, that's the road continuing all the way down to Foster. So, we're gonna put the whole road cutting through from Washington to Foster now, but the development is only in the top half.
I see.
So, what we're doing is opening up the bottom half for the future.
And what's the acreage that you're covering under phase one?
4.67, I believe.
For, for 50 units, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
In a community building, I think I saw in there, a common building?
Yeah, the community building is in the middle, it'll hold the laundry, there's a, there'll be a playground next to it, there'll also be a telemedicine room, so folks can see a doctor without having to go to the doctor, um, and a community room where folks can schedule meetings and have parties and do whatever community functions they might need. So, it'll be a kind of a multipurpose, multipurpose building. The, the way the development's structured is sort of two pods, an upper pod and a lower pod, and the community building will sort of connect the two pods hopefully and get a little bit of...
Other questions? Manager call?
Just a comment.
Sure.
First, uh, this development group, you can go on their website and see some examples, some of the projects they've done. Um, this is a, a known developer, uh, their team, uh, they met with our, our technical review team and city staff, I think there was five people in your team, and they are, several of those people are known to us, uh, from the engineering and design community. Uh, things are moving very quickly. I, I would also offer out that, uh, a TIF in this particular circumstance is almost essential because, uh, Maine, uh, housing authority's looking to see that a community has skin in the game. However, as Kevin has noted, um, the tax shifts involved because of Ellsworth's positionings as such, uh, will largely, if not entirely, offset that, so, uh, this is a pretty good deal for, for everyone. Uh, and, lastly, I just mentioned that from a land use standpoint, uh, given the fact that so many services are within walking distance of this complex, not to mention recreational opportunities down at the harbor or out on the Sunrise Trail, uh, this is extremely well-positioned, so I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Actually, there's some pretty, uh, exciting projects as you look at the agenda for the planning board coming up, and, you know, we've been talking housing, 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 and, uh, some things are starting to really, really gel, and, uh, we're, not the least of which is, is this project, and we, uh, we're certainly grateful, Kevin, for everything that you've done to get it to this point. Uh, we'll probably see you back here more formally in, what do, what do we, August, September? You're gonna have something from us before you go to...
I think we're talking August 15th potentially?
Yeah. That'd be our next regular.
I'll be before the planning board a little sooner than that.
Yeah.
I'll be within this Thursday morning, then I believe again on August 3rd, maybe?
Wednesday, December 1st.
I'll be at the planning board twice more.
Right.
August and September.
All right.
Can I say there's a proposed, proposed site visit August 11th at 3:30? Just people, that's open to the public?
For, for the planning board?
Tent is proposed, yeah, we haven't voted on it, but I think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, and...
That'd be good.
This is, yeah. This is all being driven by Maine State Housing's timetable, September 22nd, was it, or?
No, it's, uh, it's October 28th is the deadline, but I was gonna have everything buttoned up a month before that.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, we're working our way back from that. I would mention that, uh, we would, the staff, work with Kevin, uh, to put the TIF application together. Uh, Kevin's organization has quite a bit of experience in this area, and of course, our legal counsel would review it, you know, to, to make sure the city's interests were protected, but, uh, the city has done housing TIFs, so this is not new, and, and we have templates out there.
Counselor more?
If, uh, if your plan comes to fruition, let's say sometime around May it starts, uh, will there be an opportunity for local, uh, housing construction people to, to bid on, on getting the job, or is it?
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah, we, we, we're gonna count on that, actually. What, what we do, we do a lot of historic rehab, converting old schools and the big complicated buildings. Those jobs, we typically pick, uh, master contractors, for, uh, it's a term of construction called construction management.
Right.
Where you choose the, the contractor up ahead, and they bid out the sub-trades, but the, the general, if you will, has been chosen, uh, because there's a specialized skill set that's involved in meeting all those requirements. But when we're doing new construction, we always go to bid because we need to get the, the best pricing and quality, and what, what we'll probably do here is we'll, we'll have a one firm, maybe from down our way that we've worked with before that wants to bid on it, but we want to have, we'll have to see what the market is like up here, we want to have at least two firms up here that are bidding it, because that's where we're gonna get the best pricing frankly. Uh, we want, we want to draw from the local sub-market, we want, that's how we're gonna be successful, is by using people that are up here already. So, uh, certainly, I think even the Portland contractors are gonna be getting all the sub-bids probably from this area, I think you'll see that, uh, when we look at the dollars per trade, I think we'll end up seeing most everybody will be 40, 50 miles of this area, because that's how, that's who's gonna be able to bid low.
We've had experience with, uh, construction management, so it should be good. Counselor, what do you?
Um, I can attest to the importance of the community being involved. Um, that was one of the conversations I had when I attended the Maine State Housing, um, explanation meeting when we came in third on a two-year, a two-selection year, and the thing that kept us in third was the city's TIF acceptance, and fortunately for us, number two backed out because the community voted it down, and that slid us in, so it is very important to have municipality be tightly involved, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's one of the reasons I'm able to prioritize this, because I came here and I was welcomed, and this, you said this is what we need, this is what we want, let's make this happen, that makes all the difference in the world frankly, so it's not just me, it's, it's whatever you guys have done before I came here that's making it happen.
Any other questions? This has been good. Sorry to have kept you waiting, but we're glad that you were able to make it.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I've, I drive half an hour to Portland, and they, I've been there till 1:00 in the morning, so it's, this is, this is a little more efficient. I hope no one from Portland's watching, but.
We look forward to working with you.
Not likely.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Item number 12, council order number 071601, request the deputy treasurer tax collector to release the Matthew Cochrane and Melanie Sawyer property, map 31 lot 45, through quick claim deed, land only at Woodland Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Typically, um, these requests are part of the consent agenda, but I deemed that it was probably appropriate and it needed further explanation. So, um, the city a few years ago foreclosed on a parcel of property, um, there's two parcels of property, there's one on 20 Woodland Road, directly across the street, um, is a land only, is where the septic is sit for 20 Woodland Street. Um, the city contacted the mortgage company, and they were stating that it wasn't part. Um, so after some, um, further research, they did realize that it was part of it, and they are, wanna pay all the back taxes off, and so what I'm asking tonight is to deed it back to the original owner.
We've received the money?
No strings attached. Counselor?
So, the bank realized that they couldn't sell a house without a, uh, running flush, so to speak.
That is correct.
Shocking.
Did the payment include the interest?
Yes, and any lean costs.
Counselor, what do you?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of council order 071601, request of the deputy treasurer tax collector to release the Matthew Cochrane and Melanie Sawyer property through a quick claim deed, land only at Woodland Road, map 31 lot 45.
Move and second it, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Item number 13, council order, uh, number 071602, request of the finance director for approval to adjust various capital improvement accounts.
So, at the last council meeting in June, a request was made to encumber certain capital improvement accounts. At that time, uh, the council had, uh, asked that there was a need for some of those accounts, and to ask if they could be closed out or moved to other capital improvement accounts. Uh, I have attached a spreadsheet for you, um, and I've taken all those accounts where the projects have ended, and it has some remaining balances. Uh, I've made some suggestions for where those accounts could be moved to. Uh, they include some reserve sub-accounts, um, for the basketball, we had a couple of accounts, and they're money totaling $8,200, I'm requesting that we could put it in a basketball court reserve sub-account, because, um, down the road, we may need to do some upgrades or, you know, some maintenance paving at those courts. Um, there was some wastewater money, there was some more school engineering and water in Nolton Park, uh, I'd like to put those in some, um, reserve sub-accounts, particular to that project, or those departments. Um, the remaining, there is about $59,000 left over from various line items that, uh, there's a couple of options that we could do. We could transfer to, uh, a capital reserve sub-account, or we could, um, move it to another capital improvement account, if that's what the council wishes.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions of the...
Yes, Counselor.
Um, under the Nolton Park fundraising and asbestos abatement?
Mm-hmm.
Did you intend to have that transferred to the water department reserve account?
Oh goodness, no.
Oh, that's a Nolton Park reserve?
Should be, Nolton Park, yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the, um, we agree with all the amended transfers, um, but I think with a project we've got coming up in this building to secure it, uh, I'd like to see that, uh, $58,914.1 go to the city hall maintenance account, or whatever you call it, so that we can pay to secure this building when dispatches are gone. That's the only change I would like to see on it.
I would agree. I thought she was transferring the, uh, Nolton Park, uh, to the water department to pay for the...
Water?
Yeah, the splash pad.
That wouldn't pay the interest on it.
Wouldn't start, would it? But I agree with, uh, setting aside the $58,000. We may not need all that, but, uh, it's there, we, yeah.
I'd also like to add, we had, um, taken it, cut it out of the budget, but for the city hall roof, um, $30,000, we were looking at possibility of, um, borrowing the money to do that project, we could also use it for, for this as well.
After we secure the building.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying that there could be some money available.
So, the technical term would be the city hall...
City Hall capital reserve.
Capital.
Or capital improvement account.
Capital improvement. Good?
Ready? Yep. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the finance director to transfer the FY 2016 capital improvement remaining balances as presented with the two changes. Nolton Park, $7,133.12 will go to Nolton Park capital reserve sub-account, and, or maintenance, whichever is appropriate, and that the $58,914.71 go to city hall capital improvement account.
Second.
Move and second it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 14, council order number 071603, discussion in action on allowing the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce to include a beer tasting event as part of the Autumn Gold festivities at the Harbor Park. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you for hearing me. Um, we were approached by Gary Cresswell, the owner of Airline Breweries.
Name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gretchen Wilson, executive director of Ellsworth Chamber.
Thank you.
Again, good evening. We were approached by Gary Cresswell of Airline Breweries to, um, add to our events on September 24th, Saturday, August Gold Sa, Autumn Gold Saturday. Uh, he wanted to have a small tasting tent with a few of our members, uh, probably two breweries and two wineries at the maximum, and, um, it would include, um, of course, Airline Brewery. I have spoken with the liquor inspector, as a matter of fact, today in regards to the application, and, um, am willing to take any questions that you have in regards to this. We haven't really moved forward any more than discussing it, um, at the chamber level until the council approves us doing this event. Um, I did send you all a map where we would locate the tent. Um, if you've been to the harbor during Chowder Fest, uh, the Chowder Fest tent takes up the area from about the green space at the parking lot to the gazebo, we get the largest tent that we can fit there, um, and it doesn't go beyond that because of the new walkway, and how we have to stake that tent, and fits nine chefs. The gazebo is just beyond it, and then beyond that would be where we would put the beer tasting tent, a little bit of a, a break between the two so that we can have the appropriate fencing that the police department will require. The application to the state would be a special tasting license, it would be held by the breweries and the wineries, with one brewery, the Airline Brewery being the, the, um, first signature on it, and then all the others would be listed underneath.
So, it's a tasting license?
It's a special tasting license. Basically, these work where you, um, charge one fee, and the recipients get tagged on a glass, and because there would not be a significant amount of food there, the state allows 12 ounce, certain ounces, either one and a half for wine, or up to four for beer, 12 tickets per person, and, um, without food, so there is a limit. 21 and older, um...
How many of those would it take to get a taste?
Excuse me?
How many of those would it take to get a taste?
Well...
I'm a total novice, I'm...
Well, I went to a beer tasting situation once, uh, in college, and, uh, it went very well.
And it never ended, yeah.
No, this would have a starting and an ending point. Um, the, the, um, all of the pours obviously would be licensed by their individual companies and be required to have had the appropriate certification by the state prior to being there. The breweries and wineries would have to have that list on-site as to who their servers are, they would have to be tagged with their names and, um, what company they're from. Um, so basically, it's, it's their licenses, um, the chamber would act as volunteers on both entry and exit of the tent. What else can I tell you?
All product will stay within the tent?
Yes.
So, does the city have to issue any license on this at all?
It's a state license, I believe. I believe the city has to sign their names onto the 5.24 license that Mr. Cresswell will initiate.
Off-premise license, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a, similar to an off-premise license, yes.
Manager call, you're dying to get in there, I don't hurt you.
I am.
All right.
No, I just, on note, I've had some experience with this kind of event.
Do you fall down and get hurt often doing that?
No, 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 my, my wife volunteered me for the event up in Bangor, just as you just described it, uh, this was hosted on the Bangor waterfront, uh, on city of Bangor waterfront property, uh, by the... the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and it's a very popular event.
I spoke with Carrie this morning, so...
Right. You know, it's, uh, if it's anything like the Bangor one, I think people will be very pleased with it.
I think it's great addition.
Have they vetted it through the Police Department?
We have not. We have spoken with the Police Chief about it, but we were not going any further than here first. We would also have to vet it through the Fire Department and our illustrious 30-year servant of...
Inspector.
Inspector, yes, inspector. As to tent size, number of people.
Number of ounces.
Yes. One entrance and an emergency exit.
Is that a roped-off area? How are you doing?
Yes. Um, Bangor had initially double snow fencing, one four-foot and then another six-foot, or six-foot and then four-foot. Bangor Police brought that back down to one fence beyond the tent area, so that people cannot pass a glass over a fence.
Who would do that?
I don't know.
I'm gonna be on your boat with a brown bottle.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
The pours, of course, are limited to the amounts on the glass because it is a tasting.
It's a good place to retreat to.
It sounds like an excellent idea and a good way to highlight all the new brewing that's going on, at least in Portland, and if we can do more of it here, that would be great, too. So, yeah, a good way to kind of dabble in.
We're hoping to start small, not sort of knowing, you know, how many people. We have 400 that go through the tent at Chowder Fest, but that includes families and kids. There would be no one under 21 allowed into the tent.
I don't usually like a good time, but I'll support this one.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Anybody else want to be like Bangor? No desire to be like Bangor.
Only better.
Ms. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Economic Development Director for the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce to add a new event, brew wine tasting tent on the waterfront for the Autumn Gold Days hosted by Airline Brewing Company.
Second.
Move and second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
It's unanimous now. You can talk to the Police Chief. But let me talk to him first. Item 15, Council Order Number 071604, request of Finance Director to award contract to Atlantic Landscape Construction for Norton Park Maintenance. Finance Director.
Yes, this is a request to hire Atlantic Landscape, the, uh, for a maintenance contract through FY-17. They'd be responsible for weekly mowings, edgings, fertilization, mulching, weeding, and the spring and fall opening and closing of the park. I'd like you to consider this request as Atlantic Landscape was the contractor for the Norton Park construction, and this, we want to ensure the warranty of the grounds for the first year.
What was the, if I could ask, what was the term in the contract? There was a certain number of months, or maybe it was a year, I don't know, but where they would ma- we would maintain them for, for doing this kind of work. And the reason I'm asking is if we've already satisfied that, shouldn't, shouldn't this have gone out to, uh, to bid?
Ms. Chairman, we had that discussion, if you remember right, and the warranty is still valid until this fall, I believe, and we didn't want to mix up the two possible contractors in pointing who, who killed the grass. So I think Finance Committee, we asked Mickey to get prices to keep it with Atlantic this year to cover the warranty questions, and then next year, plan on going out and bid during the budget session. Does that sound right?
Next year meaning budgets, next budget session?
Yep, yep, FY-18.
I mean, we can explain that, but otherwise, people are saying, well, why didn't that go to bid? I've had many questions on that.
I apologize. I should have explained more.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm, Counselor.
In the description of work, one of them is the fall leaf cleanup, and then just below that, it says additional maintenance requests that are required beyond that list and above. And one of those items is leaf cleanup, removal, and disposal. Do we know if they're raking or not? Is what the notes do.
We can certainly look into that. I don't have any idea. They are? It's included.
I'm sorry?
It's included.
The raking of the leaves and removal and so on? Okay.
I would suggest, Counselor Blanchard, they're not gonna rake, they're gonna blow. No, I mean, every...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nobody rakes leaves anymore. They take those leaf blowers, backpacks, and they blow. Then they pick them up.
Oh, yeah, but it's... As long as they're gone.
Yeah.
Counsel, action?
I just, one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, up until this point, who has been doing the maintenance?
They have as well.
They have.
But it was on last year's contract. It was for a small portion of the year, just a couple of months. So this would take us through until June 30th of 17.
They haven't been mowing, though.
Yep. Yeah, they have.
They have? The city hasn't been mowing that hard?
No.
And are they watering? I, I asked just because I was there and it was a bit scratchy.
No, they don't water.
I, I sort of had some concerns about its condition at the moment, just to put that out there. So if they've been doing it up until this point, I might want to have someone take a peek at it, just to make sure it's being...
We'll have the Public Works Director to look and see if they can use their equipment to irrigate it.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, uh, these numbers we're seeing, these, this is an estimate? I, I'm not really clear. Is it a contract or is it a, just something they've estimated? And...
I'm gonna ask the...
Is it, is it a budgeted item, I guess?
It is a budgeted item. We issued this amount, and I'm gonna refer to it.
This piece of paper, it says this is the budget amount, and that's, and what, I gave this to Tammy because the last one I have, um, I can't locate with no part. So, but this 27 is the right amount, and that includes the blowing of leaves and everything.
Good.
And the water issue is the, the only irrigated area are the flower areas. So I'll, I'll check that out.
Okay. It does say here irrigation, spring startup, and fall shut. Oh, that's the system?
That's the system. The irrigation, right, for the gardens, but the irrigation goes on every day.
Right, for the gardens, but the grass.
Right. The grass is not irrigated. You could not afford that, but we'll check in what we can do about it. But they weren't asked to water it all the time.
Right.
Should, uh, should this read total amount of $27,000.060 or up to $27,060? Does it make any difference?
Up, up to.
Up to is fine.
To be taken from, we should say where that's from.
It's, it's aligned in budget.
Okay.
Norton Park. I, I don't have the account number off the top of my head.
That's the amount we budgeted, though.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, move Council Order approval on Council Order 071604, request of the Finance Director to award a contract to Atlantic Landscape Construction for Norton Park Maintenance, up to $27,060, as per their quote.
Second.
Move and second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Before item 16, we're gonna do the additional items, taking two items out of Order 19B, we will do first.
And is that the bridge project?
That is the Shore Road Culvert, isn't it?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we're requesting that the council authorize the city manager to accept the bid from KJ Dugas Construction for $120,730 for the Davis Brook Shore Road Culvert Reconstruction Project. This would be funded out of a grant of $89,354, as well as augmented with $31,376 out of our local roads' capital improvement account. The bids did come in higher than the original projection, but that was largely due to the fact that, uh, the SCO was upgraded to improve site distance on Shore Road, as well as change the, fix the grade in front of the Eggleston residence. This is the low point on Shore Road. This is where the water consolidates. Given we're in there changing out a box culvert, it makes sense to address the geometry of the road at the same time, so I think it's a great improvement, and we're still leveraging $3 for every $1 the city would be putting in. Also, Andrew McCullough, engineer, notes that Dugas gave us a significantly lower unit price on the asphalt pavement portion of the project, as he's not subletting it, because it's a relatively small, small project. So I don't think putting it back up to bid would do any better. I think it's the right approach, and I would recommend that the council accept the bid.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
I got a quick, quick question.
Yes, Counselor Ford.
Are we accepting the alternate one bid, which is the concrete footing for $7,000, or is that not needed?
If it's not within the $120,000...
It's not.
Oh, do you know, Tammy? I was not here on Friday when the bids were open, so...
We can accept that. Accept that at a later date if we need to.
Right.
Engineer McCullough couldn't be here this evening because it was short notice and he had another meeting to attend. Or he would be here explaining it a little bit more.
Right.
That's fine. We can have it if need.
Inclusion of it or not inclusion of it would not make a difference in the scoring of the, just a little bit of difference in money. Okay? Thank you.
I mean, I'm assuming because he didn't specify the alt, that, that he's not recommending it, but we'll clarify that.
All right. So, Ms. Chairman, move to approve the request of the city manager to accept the bid from KJ Dugas Construction, Inc., for the Davis Brook Shore Road Culvert Reconstruction Project, at an estimated cost of $120,730, and a further move to accept the unit prices is to be funded from the stream crossing public infrastructure grant in the amount of $89,354, and from the local roads' capital improvement account in the amount of $31,076.
Second. Move and second it. Any discussion? What's the timeframe on this?
It's going to construction this fall, probably, I believe, September, Michelle.
Great.
Do the dates on it.
Yeah, they have to do, they have a really tight timeframe because of, uh, permitting.
Right.
It has to be this fall.
Right, because of the fish spawning season.
Sam, we gotta get up there.
And I'd also thank the council for the consideration on this, because they have to order this box culvert. You know, it's, you know, it'd be shipped in, so we need to get moving.
Thank you. We have a motion now on the floor to move and second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And then item 19C, added item. Counselor Ford, do you have any information on that one?
I was gonna look forward to listening to Chief Dick Moore present this. He's already presented it to the county commissioners and gotten their nod of approval, so now that he's practiced with them, he can impress us.
Good evening.
Yep, okay, Chief.
This is a request to move Midnight Dispatch Service over to the Hancock County RCC Regional Communications Center. Over the last month, Chief Tupper and I have been in coordination with the RCC to move Midnight Dispatch over. We have a vacancy on a midnight shift, and we anticipate other vacancies this year. This is the first step in moving our dispatch over there. We are currently working to make sure we have correct phone connectivity and radio connectivity with the RCC. So we met with the Finance Committee on Friday and proposed to have a budget of not to exceed $10,000 to do that. We don't have the exact figures yet, and we are, have received concurrence unanimously from the Hancock County Commissioners.
All right. Questions, anyone? Comments? We've had a chance to hear the initial report last week, and it seems like this is moving along, and now's the time to get, get it going.
Good timing.
Yep. Counselor Ford here.
Just for the public input, Chief, this is for pilot six-month program?
Yes, sir.
Total cost is $9,200?
Uh, well, that was for six months.
Yeah, for six months.
Correct. It was a little over $18,000 a year.
Yep. And you would suggest that, um, you're gonna save probably that much in overtime and shift wages doing this?
Yes, sir.
So it's, it's a good thing for the budget as well as backup, because in this building, we have one dispatcher. Over there, they've got two.
Correct.
Okay, good, good project.
Midnight would be 11, 11:00 PM till 7:00 AM with a, except for on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. It wouldn't start till 1:00 AM just because of their current workload over there.
Thursday, Fridays, or is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I believe it was.
Okay, well, this communication says otherwise.
All right, well...
So make sure, make sure the right one is signed.
It's, um, yeah, you're right. It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
What's your pleasure? Ms. Chairman, move to approve the agreement between the City of Ellsworth and the Hancock County Commissioners for the Regional Communications Center, third shift dispatching services as presented and adjusted, as Mr. Ford here.
No, what's there is good.
It is right.
Second.
Do we need to authorize manager to sign on behalf, or does that go without saying?
It should be in the motion.
I'd add that as a friendly amendment, authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Sounds good to me.
There you go.
Yes, it's, yes.
Move and second it and amend it, and we're voting on it as amended. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We're now gonna move to item number 16. We're going into executive session to discuss... We're going into executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph six D. We will plan to come out of executive session to take up any results of that executive session meeting. And we'll go into executive session again and come out of that one to act upon anything that has come out of that session. So, we're hoping not to be too, too long, but we're now in executive session.
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman, move going to executive session in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph six D, as in David.
Second.
All in favor? We're in executive session. Here we resume the meeting. Item number seventeen, Council Order Number zero seven one six zero five. Discussion in action on ratifying the local Ellsworth wastewater treatment plant unit, Local Union three twenty-seven Massachusetts and Northern New England Laborers District Council Union contract.
Say that quickly three times.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor.
Has the union approved this and signed it?
Yes, they have.
Okay, forgot to ask that. Thank you. Ms. Chairman, move approval of the union contract with the wastewater department as presented.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Everybody comfortable? Item eighteen is an executive session to discuss the condition acquisition for the use of real or personal property in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph six C.
So moved, Ms. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor? We are now in executive session. All right, who wants to attempt a motion here as far as any action?
Would it be appropriate, Ms. Chairman, to state publicly that we've given staff direction and we, this time, will take no official action? So moved?
Second. That works. Just to explain, so you people understand, that doesn't mean it's no action, but we've directed the staff so we don't have to take any action ourselves right now. We'll see how things keep moving.
But as Gary said, I think it was Gary, somebody, that we will be having the staff work on it so that it will be ready as soon as you're ready.
Yes, whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item twenty.
I want to say...
Move adjourned.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned.